Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry we're a little bit late. It is now 6:06. This is the Finance and Operations Committee. It is Tuesday, September 12, 2023. It's hard to believe we're in September going into fall. We're in the North High School boardroom. And Ms. Brown, if you can just take attendance.
Paula Johnson.
Present.
Neil Claffey.
Here.
Jessica Brown is present. We have a quorum. Also in attendance, we have Dr. Mario Andre and Mr. Rodriguez and Dan Donovan.
And Mr. Lassard.
And Mr. Lassard.
Sorry. I want to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. The first issue we have, I don't like to say issue, the first item on the agenda is the crossing guard update. So, Mr. Lassard, if you can give us an update?
Yes, thank you. As you may know, we report updates every year in regards to the status of the crossing guards. And the last few years, we haven't been going in the right direction. For instance, when we started off the school year, last school year, we had 11 vacancies. When I gave you your last update this past spring, we had 16 vacancies. We're now up to 17 vacancies, technically 19. We have a crossing guard that's out due to injury because they were struck. We just don't know if they're going to be coming back or not. So, we're technically up to 19 posts throughout the city, which is 58% of our crossing guard posts across the district don't have anyone at them currently. What I would kind of implore you to do at this time is strongly consider changing the hourly rate to a flat hour. For instance, in the afternoon, the majority of our crossing guard posts only pay a half hour. So, that comes up to $8.51 and change. So, between gas prices right now, the weather that these individuals have to work in, the extreme heat like this week, the cold that's coming up, the rain, not to mention, you know, they're dealing with the motoring public at times, which isn't always that friendly. Paying them at the hourly rate could be an ask, but you know, we are a municipality. I think the $8.51 is just a bit much to ask for what these people endure.
Can I ask you, what is the going rate for the surrounding area?
So, we're paying $17.03 right now. I'm not necessarily asking you to change the hourly rate. Next Door and Hudson, they give them a flat rate, and that is at $17.53.
So, Hudson gives a flat rate. And are they seeing problems with the crossing guards?
Everyone's seeing problems. I want to be clear, I don't think paying people, you know, a one-hour rate is going to solve our problems. I think it's strictly, I'm looking to stop the hemorrhaging.
Right. Any questions on this? Claffey?
Mr. Donovan, can we afford it?
Well, I took a look. So, what, basically what Ms. Lassard's suggesting, and we thought about it before, was so you, when you work a shift, you get an hour instead. It might be half hour, it might be 40 minutes, whatever, everyone, you get an hour. So, let's say, and let's say we have the non-affiliated raise will be coming forward to probably next month. So, let's say it's $17.50 an hour. So, at $17.50 an hour, if we were to fill every single post, and doing that, we couldn't afford it. As Mr. Lassard said, and the reality is, we probably will not fill every single post. Last year, we spent about $89,000 on crossing guards, and we were about half full, right?
Correct.
So, we have a budget this year of about $112,000. Last year, we had about $135,000. It's a little less. But, I mean, it's, it's something we may want to consider, to give it a try, to say, okay, you get an hour for every shift you work, an hour's worth of pay, and see if it improves. It's almost like substitute teaching. We know we don't have enough subs. If we filled up every single position when it was open, it would cost us some arm and a leg, but it's just not there. And teachers, substitute teachers, as hard as they are to find, they're easier to find than crossing guards. So, I think the suggestion, I mean, we could, we could probably give it a go for this year and see what happens. I mean, worst case, we might, it's probably a little bit of Esser funds or something if we had to dig in, but I think it's worth trying.
I think, I think it's a fair work practice showing up to do that kind of a job for one hour. It's not like we're paying them for six or 12 hours of work. I think this isn't fair.
I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Claffey, do you? No, I mean, you know, when you go to work with most stores, they have to pay you, you have to be there for at least two hours before you can even go home sick, you know, most of the time. So, I mean, to pay them for an hour, even if they're there a half hour, 45 minutes, I mean, that's, this is going to break the bank. It's in the safety of our students. So, so we don't need to make a motion on this. We can just, do you want a motion?
I don't.
Because I don't have anything down here. I think it was-
Yeah, no, we didn't, I don't know if we need a motion.
Okay.
I think it's a practice, we can just start, let's say-
It's not that much. Okay. If you need a motion, then you can-
October 1st, we can start it and go from there.
Yeah, if you need a motion, you can bring it back to the full board at our next meeting, and then we could just put the motion in.
And I would say at your next report, just mention, just mention it.
Okay, so we'll go with that, to pay them for the one hour. Okay. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, we appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is plant operation equipment purchase. I guess you're sitting in for Mr. Smith tonight?
Yes, Mr. Smith was unavailable. So, this is a relatively simple purchase request. They're looking to replace the floor scrubber at this school. It's a 14-year-old machine. It's no longer in service due to very expensive repair costs. So, basically what we've done is we've standardized our scrubbers and machines from the same company, Tomcat. And not only does it make sense for training, but also for parts and repairs and things like that. So, the local dealer that has the best prices on, on, on this, this machine is Cleanorama out of Gorham, Maine. They're also the vendor we use for all our paper towels and soap and toilet paper, et cetera. So, Mr. Smith would like to purchase one for this school for $12,784.80.
Question, when did this machine break down that he couldn't repair it?
It's been breaking down, and they've been repairing it. But these machines probably have a life of, you know, 10 to 12 years. But it, we've had it for 14.
Locked out. Any questions? Okay. So, I'm going to recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the Tomcat Pro Ride from Cleanorama of Gorham, Maine, in the amount of $12,784.80. Funds will come from account 91.1.222-620.71999, Miscellaneous Equipment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Claffey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you on that one. The next one is the IT core switch. That's you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening. Here to talk about the purchase of six core switches for Fairgrounds, Middle School, Penachuk Middle School, Bicentennial, Fairgrounds Elementary, Main Dunspole, and Nashua High North. These were two separate bids, but put into one just because their language is pretty similar in the, the bid amount. Even though the, the models were different for five of the schools, it was, the North High School was the most expensive one, you can see that on the bottom. So, the elementary and middle school switch that we went with is totaling $50,609.60 from RTM/Intra Systems. And we also went with RTM and Intra Systems for the core switch at Nashua High North for $80,609.79. And this is to replace the aging switches that are in schools. So, these, this is where the internet comes in and then distributes it throughout the building for everybody.
Question, when we did the renovations for the two middle schools, how come this wasn't included in it?
We had some, so with E-Rate, you can't take things out of the building that hasn't really come end of life yet. So, with core switches being as expensive as they are, they, especially because these are FCC-purchased devices, so the program we have is E-Rate, and we get reimbursed because of, we're a school or a library. So, when, if we were to get audited and taking things out of the building that haven't yet become end of life, these are things that we have to, you know, be careful about doing. So, we can't take things out of a building that haven't expired yet.
So, end of life is now?
Yes.
Not before?
Yeah, correct.
But even if we were doing a renovation, we couldn't have asked for an exception on a renovation, two renovation projects?
Even, even because it was also, it was purchased with federal money. We get reimbursed through federal money. That's, it's just how the program works, so we just had to abide by the federal guidelines for that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Brown. Was this budgeted in the IT budget this year or in the maintenance budget?
It was in the IT budget for this year.
It was already in the-
Yeah, yeah.
And is this what our budget line was approximately the cost?
Yeah, right around that area, yeah.
Hey, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of five core switches for FMS, PMS-
VI?
Bicentennial.
Bicentennial. Fairgrounds and Main Dunspole to RTM Intra Systems for a total of, cost of $50,609.60, funding to come from account 91.1.99222553628.
Also another one for $80,000 below that, too.
Do you want us to split this up or do it all at once? The motions?
I'd do just two, two motions, yeah.
At the same time? Or do you want me to vote on each one?
Vote on this one and then do the next.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure how you wanted it to read. Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Did you want to make the motion on the next one?
I move to approve the purchase of a new core switch for Nashua High School North to RTM Intra Systems for a total cost of $80,609.79, funding to come from account
And I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome. Have a good evening.
This is like your easiest night in here.
Now, this is- Go while you can. Okay, the next one on the agenda is Project Succeed contracts. Who's going to talk on that?
Well, I'll start it, and then superintendent can feel free to jump in because he was sort of part of the process. But if you recall, prior to COVID, we had a contract with the Youth Council for a suspension center for middle school students, and then we had a, another one for high school students. COVID happened, those programs sort of, there was no need for them. Esser funds came in. With those funds made available, administration at the time decided, well, maybe we can do this slightly different. So, we got the Boys and Girls Club involved, and we got the Youth Council involved. So, the Youth Council provides the mental health services, Boys and Girls Club provide the, the space, the transportation, they feed the kids, and they also provide some curriculum help. And then the school hired an MTSS coach, which I know what it stands for, but it's a, the superintendent can speak more to that in a minute. So, we provide that sort of staff leader. And so, basically, we ran this program for the last year and a half. We do have it in the Esser III, which we have one more year of Esser, Esser III is this school year 2324. So, we did put the budget in there. We probably have to increase it a bit, but there are some funds already in there. So, the superintendent and assistant superintendents met with all the parties, and I'll sort of turn it over to-
So, yeah, as Mr. Donovan was saying, that over the course of the last few months, Mr. Poska, Dr. Safdie, and I have been in communication with the Boys and Girls Club about how do we continue this program. And as Mr. Donovan said, it has been successful. Ironically, last week, I gave you a presentation in my weekly report on a PowerPoint that we provided to the National Prevention Coalition Advisory Board. So, and it was really about the success of this program. Furthermore, we are also working with the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation and Keene State College on the evaluation and making sure that there are some deliverables, and then we can replicate it going forward. So, we're really happy with our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, with the Youth Council, and really the success that our students are seeing through this program. It's really nice that we have been able to fund it through Esser III grant, and really our conversations with the Boys and Girls Club, the Charitable Foundation, and Keene State is how do we support this and make it sustainable moving forward? So, we're looking for the motion tonight to approve these contracts with the Boys and Girls Club and the Youth Council.
Before I ask my questions, does anybody else have questions ahead of me? Ms. Brown?
I do have a couple of questions. So, have we already been approved to use some of our Esser grant funds for this project, or is that still pending?
Yes, yes.
And are we primarily serving the middle school or the high school at this point?
Yeah, so when we break down the data, it's mostly sixth graders and ninth graders, and some eighth graders.
So, kids that are transitioning and having maybe a struggle at that point, is that what we're kind of the pattern we're seeing?
Yeah, yeah, ninth graders, students who are having, they might be repeat ninth graders, so they're not first year, might be students who are struggling academically or socially or behaviorally, and then ninth, middle school is some of the same behaviors.
And what kind of things are we using as benchmarks to qualify students for Project Succeed?
So, it's administration referrals, teacher referrals, it might be some of their behaviors that they're engaging in. We do work with outside agencies, so it might be a place where, again, with the Youth Council saying, you know, Mario needs a break for like five days or 10 days, and then they get the counseling there, and then they come back to the school. So, we're looking at several different data points to make the referrals.
And do you find this is students who maybe they're with very, very low attendance, or mostly they aren't coming to school, but they're just having behavioral-
So, it's a, it's a little bit of a mix, and I wish I had the pie chart up of what some of the issues are. So, bigger issues why students are going to Project Succeed might be drug-related or other outside forces, like outside influences outside the school that, again, where the Youth Council is helping them address different social-emotional needs. It's, it's mostly not academic, I'll say that, it's some kind of behavior, but in many of the instances that we look at, it is, it could be a substance abuse issue or social-emotional.
And do we do, do we have some kind of substance abuse counselor? Is that part of what's included in this?
Exactly.
And just, this is more a kind of specific question. For students who are going there, I have heard some rumors that maybe there is still a lot of vaping and smoking, that kind of thing going on. Is that something that's being addressed moving forward?
Yeah.
Specifically?
Yeah, we saw it as well.
That specific problem?
Yes, yeah, we, we saw it as well in the Boys and Girls Club, so we're trying to curb that as well, so.
All right. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Just one, I have one.
Sure.
Thank you. So, the personnel reductions are about a third of what was spent this past year, and I was wondering, there's no one here from the Boys and Girls Club, so how do they feel about the pretty severe cuts in the academic support?
So, we were with Craig on these recommendations. So, this was in partnership, it wasn't unilateral, saying we're moving in one direction. So, he gave us three different proposals with the pros and cons, and actually, we picked the one in the middle. So, this actually model came from him.
And the, one of the other areas of savings at the Boys and Girls Club was their rental rate. We're paying less this year for renting their space than we did last year. So, that was one of the savings. And the other was, as Dr. Andre mentioned, the change in, in the number of hours spent by their staff. The reality is, we do have one extra Youth Council person in the program this year. Last year, we had two at the middle schools, but now we have three at the middle schools.
Is that, is that one serving each school?
Exactly.
And then there's one at the high school as well?
And there's, yes.
And that's in hopes of being proactive, so in that-
Especially when the students go back, because they don't stay here for the year, they, they're there for however long, they need to be, and then they're back in the school, and they have the support back in the school.
Okay, so have we gotten any feedback from parents or guardians when their student goes into the program?
So, the parents have to agree. So, even all the students who are referred to Project Succeed, not 100% of them agree to participate in the program. So, there are some parents saying, I don't want my son or daughter to participate in that program, especially if it's a five or a 10-day suspension, and the student may serve the suspension at home. So, again, it's in collaboration with the parents on placing the student at Project Succeed for that short interval.
But when they're placed in Project Succeed, and they go back into their school, do we send any information out to the parents to kind of get feedback from them that they saw a change that when they were in the Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, I don't have that information in front of me, but I'll be more than happy to follow up with Chris McCollum, who is the MTSS coordinator. But I know part of this is really pivotal on that school-parent-family relationship.
I think that's important because that's the only way we know if the parents feel it was successful with their child being out, you know, for how many length of time out of their homeschool versus being suspended.
Can I ask a quick question related to that? So, I think last year, the, they did a presentation based on the survey. So, can we expect something like that in the spring? I can't remember whether there were questions to parents, but do you remember they did a presentation on the overall effectiveness and-
Yeah, and so we'll be more than happy to do that, and I'm just waiting for this presentation to upload. But one of the slides is that, how are students referred? It's the administration working with the parents, so the parent's voice is really important. And I'm just looking for the data slide of how many students actually returned back to the program, because I think it was, most of the students were only in there for once, right? So, and then I think there was a handful of students who had three, three or more visits. So, it was nice that really- Slow here.
I think we need to kind of see the success rate on this to make sure that it's working that, in this partnership that we have. Because, of course, we all know the goal is to make sure our students are in school, the proper behavior, that they're learning, and if there is some problems, that we address it. But I want to make sure that this program is definitely working in the best interest of-
And that's where we're also partnering with Keene State, so it's just not our, like, what's the program objective, what's an outside evaluation independent, because really, it's how do we sustain it moving forward, and can we partner with the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation or other partners to make sure that this program is sustainable and we have a good funding source. So, just as a quick point of data, so students who went to Project Succeed one time was, out of 206 kids, 149 of them went one time, which is 71%. Students who went two times to Project Succeed, there was a total of 50 students for 23%, three times, 11 students for 4%. And students who went four times, there were seven students, which is 2%.
So, it seemed to be effective in getting student behavior. So, I guess I have two questions kind of related to that. One, for the students, do we, do we monitor them? Well, I'm sure we are. How do we monitor them for the rest of the school year to see how they've transitioned back to school after?
So, it might be, again, the Youth Council that's assigned at the middle school level, the high school level, or one of the administrators, again, monitoring their behavior, so. And again, depending on why they were referred, but we didn't see any repeat behaviors. But having the Youth Council in the schools is critically important.
And I would, I would love, when you do the report, follow up later, if we could even get some anecdotal evidence from, whether it's the principals or teachers, to, to see how those success stories, or if we're seeing, hey, you know what, it worked, they came back for a month, and it was really great, but then eight weeks out, we started to see an escalation again. That would be really interesting. And then as an extension of the other side of that, the students that you're seeing for three times or four times, which I'm glad to hear that it's a small percentage, that's refreshing. At that point, are we following up with those students to see if maybe an alternative setting might be like Clearway or Brentwood or something like that?
Yeah, so that's part of the process, too. And we know for some students, like if you're just at Elm Street or even one of the high schools, sometimes the setting's too big, and they're just thriving. So, we had some students who were there for a longer, like extended times, and they were just successful because it's a small setting, they get their personal attention, and they're on task, so. But that might be the next step on, is it a Clearway referral, is it another type of school, or, but we work with them individually?
So, how do we reintroduce them back into the classroom?
So, that might be the Youth Council, or, and they're supposed to meet with the school administration, Mr. McCollum might be involved with that. But it is that process back into the classroom. One thing that is on our radar is that, you know, a student was suspended or having difficulties at North-South Penachuk, name the school. But if we don't change the, to your point, if we don't change the environment in which they left, the behaviors might continue in the future. So, we know it's a two-way street on what were the intercedents that led into the behaviors, especially if it's academic, social, emotional, it's an help first, that's something we can control. But if it is drug-related vaping or something like that, that's a different kind of counseling back into the environment.
I've got a few more questions, but one question that came to my mind is the new middle school. Is every one of those classrooms going to be filled, or we're going to have some empty vacancies in that school?
Off the top of my head, I think.
Well, I'd like to know, because, you know, I'm thinking about, rather than having a program and we're paying outside the district, maybe bringing it into one of our schools if we have enough class, if we don't use everything, so we can have them monitored at our school, bring the program into our school more.
It is something that we would consider. I think there might be room at some of the schools, but also, it's nice to have it off-campus is actually some of the distractions in one of those schools, in the school actually is removed. So, whether it's, you know, I'm not functioning well with 800 or 700 kids in the school, being removed in a quiet setting with more flexibility and more movement is actually allowing the kids to thrive. So, we have to balance where we're going to put a school in the future. But that is, when we look at the cost of, you know, is it worth, I just lost a page, of $80,000 of in rent?
But can we do the same type of setup in like a different area of the school for our students? in like a different area of the school for our students versus, you know? I mean, I guess that's something to look at in the future.
So it's a yes and no, right? So I think, you know, the counseling services we can do, but when the student is getting in trouble for roaming, right? And vaping in the, in the bathrooms or things like that, like that's, we're not removing them from that environment. They may have that same opportunity. So that's.
But I guess the question is if that they're at the Boys and Girls Club, are they more restrictive there? That they can only go in a certain perimeter? So they don't go in the bathroom, and they don't vape? And they don't go in and do other things, and they don't roam? So I guess that's my question. If, is it going to, is it a more restrictive area at the Boys and Girls Club versus if you had an area within the middle school that you set up just for this, and they have their own blocked area? Especially if rooms open up, you know? If we don't have that many students? I guess that's something for future conversation.
Yeah, so it's a future conversation. So it goes back to even with, you know, as Ms. Brown said earlier about the Boys and Girls Club, where you know that some students are still engaging in inappropriate behaviors there around vaping and sneaking off as well. So again, I think the bigger aspect of it is, you know, we're trying to be more proactive, provide more counseling, more academic success for these students, and get them back on track. And right now, the data is showing that the program has been successful. But we are, if we do have space, I think we need to be creative because this, that might be a way to sustain it kind of going forward.
Okay, so with the cutting of some staffs to save money, are students still going to get the academic supports that they really need? Yes, they're going to. Okay. And how do the teachers and the students connect with classroom teachers while they're at Project Succeed?
So that's part of the program where Mr. McCollum might be the liaison or they build an administrative, administration of the guidance councils working with the, the Boys and Girls Club and the classroom teachers to make sure the work is exchanged, and the students aren't falling behind.
So are they, is this being done via email?
Yep, it could be via mail, conversations, meetings. So it's been pretty seamless the last two years.
Okay, so they're, so they're right in step with everything that they need?
Correct, yep.
Okay. So I guess we are doing a good job supporting these students academically. Okay, great, thank you. Did anybody want to make the motion? Or do you want me to make the motion? I move to approve the Project Succeed contracts with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Nashua for the amount of $290,221.43. Funding to come from ESER III grant. The youth council for $208,844. Funding to come from ESER III grant. And the youth council for $50,000. Funding to come from ESER III grant. Do I hear a second?
You do.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so I think we're at the last part, the August financial report.
Okay, I'll just run through it quickly. Obviously, it's very early in the year. The, you know, the July, just looking at July and August quick. July's wages didn't have any teacher salaries at all in August. The first teacher pay was in August. So that's why you have a significantly higher number in August than July in the salaries and wages. Other than that, the longevity line is an error that needs to be corrected. It's, this happens, seems to be once a year when someone switches unions, they get their longevity payment in July when they're supposed to get it in January. Something happens at City Hall. I don't know what it is. And then you can see retirement and separation pay. That's, you know, you'll see August and September usually the largest amounts in there. And that's for the retired teachers like, like Mr. Claffey collecting their. Deferred, deferred payments. I'm not blaming him. No. Okay, other than that, fringe benefits, not much to speak of. The rest of the professional technical services, there's not too, too much there. Flipping over to property services, you can see that there, in, in July, for some of the utilities, the items were accrued back to June. So there's nothing in July. And the numbers you see in August really are the July bills because they're always one month behind. Not too much there. Other services, telephone, the August number's pretty big. I think that some of that money's going to be taken out and put to the new school. We were required to get a Comcast set up so that they could have phones. And, but we're going to, it'll be covered by the new school, JSSBC project until the school goes live. And whenever it's turned over to us sometime in the summer. Other than that, there's the, the one thing I have to look at is down at the bottom of the page, irregular transportation services. I think that may be last year's final bills that got booked in August. It should have been pushed back. So for that kind of money, I'll make sure that happens. It'll be pushed into, into last year. Other than that, switching over supplies and materials, the educational supply account was very large. Like 40% of it was spent. So I took a quick look. About $160,000 of that was curriculum. So they bought a lot of the Amplify and Eureka. Sort of the math and the science-type supplies were all purchased in bulk. So that's why that's so high compared to. Because I always compare this to the, to the previous year. Other than that, not too much there. Equipment, computer equipment, that was the purchase of a bunch of Chromebooks and, in July to get ready for this year.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
The curriculum materials, was that primarily like consumables? Because they were talking a few years ago about having like a supply closet.
Yeah, and we do have that. And that's, I think, yeah, I think a lot of it was, was that. So computer equipment, like I said, the Chromebooks were purchased in the summer, so they're ready for the students. And the last page, computer software. Those, we have most of those. They're annual subscriptions, and they typically run July through July. So that's why that, that's already 82% spent. And other than that, it's only 10% spent for the first two months. But shouldn't, a little early to say too much, but not too concerned after two months. Any other questions?
Questions?
Where would the crossing guards be on this?
Crossing guards would fall under 51200. The wage is part-time on the very first page.
Oh, okay, thanks.
You're not going to see a specific line item for crossing guards. It's just one of the wage line items.
Any other questions? And there's nothing for the transfer report?